Good af— nice hat. We all got one.
Yes, yeah, that looks good on you.
It does look good on me. See? I'm a stylish guy.
Hey, it looks good.
For the gram. All right. It's been a long time since we've done this, so please excuse me if I'm a little bit rusty while we get started here, but welcome to the Ju— June 27th Governing Board Meeting for Glendale Elementary School District. Please let the minutes show that we have all four, five board members present and accounted for. Please— oh, is there— um, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Changes.
Oh, are there any changes to the agenda? I told you I'm a little— a little rusty.
Good afternoon, board members. No, we do not.
All right. With that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on in our agenda to our special recognition, their monthly student attendance. Ms. Sigata Jones?
Yes, if we could step down, everybody, and then we'll do those special recognitions now. Good afternoon, everyone. We are— this is our, for those just joining us or new, we every month have an attendance award that we give to the school that has the best student attendance, and this month, last month, which would be May, goes to Horizon. So— so we— can we have any Horizon family come up with us and take a picture? Horizon families? Come on. Jessica, you're part of Horizon. Come on up. You're a part of Horizon. Good. We're glad. And we're so happy Horizon has taken the trophy. Great. Congratulations. And this award, we're proud to announce that Glendale Elementary School District is the 2024 Healthy Arizona Work Site Award in recognition of your commitment to work site wellness. May I have Davida and Jody please come forward? And could I have all of the HR family come forward, please? HR family? Debbie, come on up. HR family. Melissa, who else? Come on. Come on. Come over there. I was going to give everybody chocolate, but it didn't seem appropriate with wellness. So I said, no. No, Davida's is not a normal phone. I knew it was. I seen it. It's about this big. I get it.
Well done, Horizon. There it goes. Well done, Horizon. That was a shock to everybody, so congratulations. Make sure you drive by Discovery later and honk your horn really loud.
Angelique couldn't take it she was going to lose, so she didn't show up. Just kidding. Just kidding. She's— she's excused from the meeting, but I'm sure she would have been devastated, so. We all know how she's not shy and loves to walk up here, so. But congratulations to Horizon.
And also to the HR staff. Great work yet again. Seems we— we rack up those awards all the time now. Ms. Sigata Jones, are there any calls to the public this evening?
No, we do not have any.
Moving on in our agenda to the consent agenda, are there any items that many board members would like to comment on? All right. Here and that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote? Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to reports and informational items, principal and teacher evaluation ratings. Ms. Sigata Jones?
Yes. Board President Martinez, I'll turn it over to Ms. Debbie Valdez.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Superintendent Sigata Jones. Okay, surprise, it's the same presentation. Okay? So I'm like, wow, you're— I'm— it is exactly the same. We have not changed the evaluation instrument. It is the same information, but different numbers. So I know you've all seen the presentation, so I will just kind of click through as a quick reminder on that. So the teacher evaluation has the evaluation component and the growth and performance components, the 67 and the 33. And then out of all the actual evaluation, then there's the domains facilitation, engagement, environment, planning, and professionalism. And then within each of those domains are the elements that they are every— they're evaluated on. And then the growth and performance data takes into account the letter grades, the surveys, the reclassification, and the state assessment data. And then here's the aggregate performance classifications for the teachers for '23, '24. This is probably— this is one of the different slides because the numbers have changed for the—to reflect this school year. Then the principal evaluation, again, is the 67 and 33 as well. These are the standards of the principal evaluation. Oh, and then again, within those standards are the elements also, then the performance and growth data, and then the aggregate performance of the far principals. The end. I know. I'm like, okay. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Well, at least you changed the date.
I did. And the numbers. Any numbers did get changed on there for the most part. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on into our first set of action items this afternoon, the superintendent performance pay criteria. Ms. Sigata Jones?
Yes. In front of you have what the performance criteria has been set. You need to approve by July 1st, so if there's any changes, we need to note any changes or if we're going to continue with how is stated here.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's performance pay criteria as provided.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to the proposed expenditure budget.
Yes. President Martinez, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mike Barrett.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Sigata Jones, we're going to briefly go over the proposed budget. I'd love to tell you it's the same one as last time, but it's not. Mr. President Martinez, we made some revisions to the ADM, really kind of just going back to at least what is this last school year that we're going to end here on in the next couple of days. We think this is a critical piece of information for you to understand, not only the board, but really all stakeholders within the district. Pre-pandemic projected ADM for this— technically this current year, we had at 97, 82. We built the budget about 83, 23, and then we ended at 81, 73. That's pretty significant. And again, I'm just going to kind of remind you, because I think this is an important talking point. When we were going through school closures, people were saying— committee were saying that the numbers were going to bounce back. The decline has actually accelerated, is what we're saying. Okay? The proposed budget is taking 79, 68 as the ADM. We took a 2.5% decrease from the 100th day to— into the new year. We will be having applied economics do an updated demographic study so that we have more current data. Because when we did the budget for this current school year, the decline was about 2.5% to 3% greater than what we had projected. So we want to make sure that we're a little closer in those projections. The important piece is knowing kind of where we are, and then just look at the— what I would say, at least for now, the revised ADM projections. This is really based on this previous number, so if we were to update these numbers based on this, it's going to be lower, obviously. So it's just important for you to understand that. We will give you updated information, my guess, and my hope is sometime in that December, maybe January timeframe. Let me just— Do me a favor, Tom. Can we go through that one more time? I apologize for the technical challenges. The budget, again, was using that ADM that you just saw, and so we've used some of the legislative changes that were done. They don't reflect all the changes, but it reflects some. So when we go to the adopted budget, and in a couple of weeks, we will have all the legislative changes reflected in that budget. Just for clarity and transparency, the budget forms that were used to build the budget before you was the preliminary budget forms provided by the Department of Ed and the Auditor General's Office. They just—I believe it was Friday, if I remember correctly, they released the new forms with all the legislative changes. So we will be making some adjustments to that. What I do think is important to note here is really this budget balance carry forward. You might recall that even in the revision, when we built the '24 budget, the only reason that that number is a healthy number is because we've been leveraging the federal dollars. We'll be able to continue to do that just for one year. I don't believe that this number, for now, this $11,008, is sustainable in subsequent years. So I would say it's a significant increase, but only for perhaps only this new school year. And that should— that should be some level of concern, and we'll walk you through why in here in just a minute. But what— what we've done is also pointing out that you might recall that in this current year, the legislature— for this current year, the legislature gave about $300 million as one-time money. For us, that represented about 2.2, 2.3. That's no longer available, so that's not in this calculation whatsoever. So you can see that for this new school year, you're looking at about a $2 million swing from what you revised and made to what's before you here tonight. Yeah. Tom, can you just do it manually? Go from the M and O to the next slide, because clearly I'm not doing that correctly. It should be the unrestricted capital. Try that.
He passed it. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Can we check the batteries on this later? This budget does include the district additional assistance override that our voters approved in November. And so you're going to see that here. This is something that you've never seen before, at least not while I've been here. This is a new dollar amount. What we've done is we also kept, at least for this year, this new year coming, some money out of the RCL and DAA, really as a contingency. Should the enrollment be lower than even what we expect, we have a little bit of flexibility, either through that budget balance carry forward or a combination of the RCL slash D— DAA row. But that flexibility, guys, it will only more likely just be for this next school year. That flexibility, I don't believe we'll have the same flexibility in '26 as we do, as I project that we currently do. You can just see the difference in capital from technically the '24 budget to this proposed '25. Again, that will be temporary. This amount will have to be moved in a subsequent year to absorb the needs out of M and O. So you know that now, you know that ahead of time, which means that this number will decrease in a subsequent year. We felt—and part of the proposed and the adopted budget is talking a little bit about the tax rates, some of the projections in the end. The County Board of Supervisors will make those final determinations. I don't think we've ever matched their tax rate, but we've always been pretty close. You can see— this is the information here. We just thought we'd simplify it a little bit here. In the end, the tax rate in '24 is about 5.9. You can see that it's about 6.15, so there's about a 25 cent swing. And perhaps the focus should be, we have additional needs, and it appears that it's going to cost about 25 cents for that. I think that's going to be lower than what was in the ballot, so that's going to be a good thing. What you're also going to see differently this next school year is that we're not—we are not required to do the truth and taxation notice. We're just not asking for that for this next school year, so we don't have the requirement to publish in the newspaper. So that might be a little bit different than what you're used to in the past. Tom, is that the right order now? Okay. Will you go to the next slide for me then? The DAA, we believe it's about just under 4.5 million. It was fully restored in '22. It's based on the prior year's ADM, and we want to highlight this because I almost get the sense history might be repeating itself. When you look at the legislative reductions from 2009 to '21, you're looking at about just shy of 42 million. 38 million of that was capital. When capital—or when DAA was restored, it was restored, and it was restored earlier than anticipated. What they also did was they added an increase in funding. And I don't remember the exact number by year, but they restored it, gave us a bump, gave us another bump, and then this will be the third year. What's different, though, is that that third bump will only be a one-time. In other words, when we go into next year, we're going to be short $23 million statewide. Obviously, that's going to be pro-rated to whatever the district's portion of that is. The other piece, and I would say that not only did we advocate for that, but for increasing district additional assistance, but we also advocated for what you see there as opportunity weights. Some of us sometimes call it poverty weights. In this case, it's an opportunity weight. That also had initially a three-year increase, and it was supposed to remain. What happened with this latest budget is that we're going to get an increase of 37, but we're not going to get it again in that subsequent year. At least not—that's not the way the— what the budget was— was enacted. So between at least two components right now, we're going to have less funding in the DAA and the opportunity weight in '26. So I think it's really important this year, more than ever, to look at the '25, and then I'm going to try to make the comparison or some important points into '26. Tom, will you click it for me, please? We were always talking about Prop 206 that has a financial stressor on not only, I think, Arizona school districts, but frankly, a lot of different entities. You guys know the pressures and the compression that has done, which is why we've done a decompression study. That will continue to occur every year. Inflation, we're going to have to watch it. I don't know if it's going to continue to rise greater than, you know, what we're receiving in the base support amount, but that's obviously something that we're going to have to always be very mindful of. You know, for a couple of months, we'll have the ability to still leverage those SRT3 monies, really because it ends technically September 30th, which we're trying to be proactive, and that's why we have that healthier carry forward is because we're trying to leverage that into this year. And after really this year, that's completely done and gone. Marketing plan, we're going to continue to do that and be very strategic in that approach. You know, the efficiencies is something that we're looking at. Some of the action items that you just approved in consent, specifically in some of the areas that we oversee, there's some efficiencies that we're— project will be gained, so we're moving in that direction. And I just want to be— don't want to lose sight of this. I do anticipate that '26 will have some financial pressures, perhaps a little bit more than we're used to, and perhaps a little bit more that we're going to be comfortable with. And I believe that does conclude the PowerPoint. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I just feel bad. Mike always has to bring us the bad news.
I think it's part of my job title, responsibilities.
I'm pretty sure there's going to be a flurry of retirements in the next couple of years in the school business realm. Five? Five years? Okay. I'll be gone in four then. Yes?
You said decline is accelerating, right? Correct?
I'm sorry?
You said, uh, decline is accelerating faster than projected, correct?
Yes.
And then you said it's 2.5 to 3%?
What I said was, when you look at how we built last year's budget, it was—it accelerated about 2.5. I can't remember off the top of my head, remember Hadamio, but it was anywhere from 2.5% to almost 3% greater than what we projected. This year's budget was built with 2.5% less students or ADM from the 100th day. You know, whether that's less or more is a little challenging, but we are working with applied economics to update our demographic study. That should give us better data. I will say what's making some of those analyses more challenging is really the ESAs. It's really hard to account for that in their assessment or calculation, if you will, but it's the best information we have, knowing that it's not 100% accurate, but it is. I think it's guided us in the right direction, and I think it's allowed us to make wise decisions, as tough as they've been. I think they were right—the right decisions.
Do we know how much the ESAs are affecting us?
Yeah, that's a very great question. Mr. President, members of the board, Board Member Hadamio, that's something that we're looking into, and we actually have someone that we've hired to not only look at that, but look at how— whatever form of school choice is available, what impact that is having, and what consequence or financial burdens that may be placing on— on us. Because we do think we should look at it and then try to counteract that. And again, it kind of goes to that marketing plan and being very strategic, so I can tell you that I think it was just last week, we moved a little bit of that to be a little bit more focused, and we have two other individuals that are going to assist with that.
And then one more. We talked about declining enrollment and then how we're— we're working with a smaller and smaller budget. I would like to know how that affects us tangibly, because right now, all the numbers seem very abstract, and then I think it would help the community and people in the district understand like exactly how that's going to affect us, the students in the classroom, and the teachers.
Yeah, it's a very— a good question. I think that—that's something that we're going to try to understand, and it's going to be critical, I would say, between now and December, to have a clear understanding of what that looks like, knowing that, you know, is there— can we do something with marketing that maybe perhaps keeps an enrollment flat? Because that—as sad as this is going to sound, I would almost argue that even if the enrollment's flat, that's somewhat beneficial, because at least it's flat and you're not declining. Obviously, we want that number to go up. You know, the question becomes really, how proactive can we be and how aggressive we should take on that marketing to see if we can attempt to try to pivot the outcome of that declining enrollment? But I think those are very good questions, and I think—
But I think those are very good questions, and I think only time will really answer that. Mr. Hadameel?
Thank you.
And unfortunately, we also have two charter schools right on our border that are going to be open, I think, next year.
It is a challenge. Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the proposed FY '25 expenditure budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed budget for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hadameel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to future meetings and events. Ms. Segata-Jones, what's coming up on our schedule here?
Yes, President Martinez, you'll see July 11th, board meeting will have the 2025 expenditure budget. We'll also have extracurricular fee schedule. We've already taken the agreement to provide meals, so that can be removed. And then we'll have the facility use schedule and agreement scheduled for July 11th. We do not have a July 25th board meeting scheduled unless we need to at that time, but right now, we are saying that it will not be scheduled at that time.
Any questions about the future, Jen?
Could I ask for possibly a discussion on, at some point, on changing the date of the opening of school?
Change of calendar?
Yeah, I mean, I know where it was been approved, but just looking at some different options.
Okay. All right. Moving on into our agenda, the summary of current events. Ms. Segata-Jones?
Yes, Board Member. I have a couple things I wanted to share with you tonight. Tom, if you could go, there, thank you. There you go. Thank you, Siri. We're going to show you the end of the school year. I know, Board Member Bartels, you had asked over that May meeting, that last day of school, but Adriana, as incredible as she is, put it together for us, and we promised you that this board meeting, so here it is. Now it doesn't want to play.
I understand, so, but at any rate, um, it'd be something to think about. Uh, stay cool and I continue hopefully to enjoy your summer and if you're going on vacation, be safe, um, but enjoy that as well, so, that's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Pimentel?
I'd like to echo the sentiments of both board members, Hadamio and Wilson. Uh, stay cool and yes, there is a, uh, so much incorrect information out there where, you know, oh, we're just overflowing with money in the district office and if there is, I'd like to see it. Um, with regard to the lawsuit, I was at a conference, uh, national conference last week and I spoke to two people from New Mexico who knew about our lawsuit and they're watching us very closely. Apparently they're having some of the same issues, so, uh, this isn't just our district, our city, our county, our state, it, it's a problem everywhere, so thank you for your diligence. Uh, I'd like to say happy birthday to Ms. Hadigie. Um, beautiful balloons and matches her perfectly, enjoy, and I will say happy birthday to you every, every day. Um, if you aren't aware, we do have a hydration station at the system of care. It's at Seventy-Fifth Avenue in Bethany, please stop by if, if you have needs. And if you look at our website, I don't remember all of the places where we provide meals for our students, please go by there as well. Uh, stay cool, it's hot, stay indoors as, and stay hydrated and happy Fourth of July.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bartels?
Ditto, ditto, ditto. Um, but I'd also like to, uh, do a shout out and welcome to all our new teachers that have been getting onboarded over the last several weeks. Um, I keep seeing pictures pop up and I'm like, welcome to the family. Um, and then also thank you to everybody that was able to come out and successfully donate blood this week, um, even though that's hosted by our wellness department and it's to promote healthy lifestyles with our, our employees. It also is a benefit to our community as well. Um, please stay careful out there because it is hot, you know, it's like walking out into a convection oven, so, you know, hope your A.C. continues to work and/or you have a pool. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I just want to offer my thanks to Mr. Bettigan and Ms., uh, Ms. Sagata Jones for going through with the Capitol lawsuit. I know you've spent a lot of time in testimony and getting ready for it and it's more than what you see on the stands and I can guarantee you that literally every district in the state is looking towards this district right now to see what happens. And it amazes me to see the state take a position and go through the mental gymnastics required to make themselves believe that public education is not in the public interest, um, and should not be paid for with public dollars. Um, so thank you very much for spearheading that fight. Uh, everybody appreciates it and, um, I do too. I, I, I enjoy coming in to work with you guys here, uh, the board meeting, so thank you very much. Other than that, um, that is the end of our public comment and as they say, as my kids like to say in my house, hydrate before you die-drate. Make sure you drink all the water out there. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn to executive session. It is recommended that the governing board recess to regular meeting, the regular meeting in order to convene to executive session for the following purpose. In accordance with A.R.S. thirty-eight dash four-three-one dot O-three-A-one, for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's employment contract. It's also recommended governing board recess to regular meeting in, to, order to convene to executive session for the following purpose, in accordance with A.R.S. thirty-eight, four-three-one-O-three, A-E three and A-four, for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from and providing direction to the attorney for the public body regarding the superintendent Cynthia Sagata-Jones' contract of employment, as well as it is recommended governing board recess to regular meeting in order to convene to executive session for the following purpose, in accordance with A.R.S. three-eight dash four-three-one-O-three, A-three and A-four, for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from and providing direction to the attorney for the public body regarding the agreement with the Glendale Police Department. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session?
All right, I will make a motion that the board recess the regular meeting in order to convene into executive session for all of the reasons stated.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hadamio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, welcome back. Is there a motion to reconvene to regular session?
I'll make a motion to reconvene into regular session.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Harameel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, thank you. Moving on to our next batch of action items, the Superintendent Employment Contract. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the Superintendent's employment contract as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All right, Mr. Harameel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Moving on to action item number two, the agreement with the City of Glendale Police Department. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the City of Glendale Police Department as presented in executive session.
Second.
All right, Mr. Harameel, how do you vote?
Can I explain my vote?
Yes.
The agreement, while I know it's in the advancement of community safety, I do think we need to spend more time to examine the details and make sure that everything's tip-top and okay. I do have some privacy and civil rights concerns, and with that, I vote nay.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, and the motion passes. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?